All right, I will call this meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau? John Samia?
Present.
Morris DiPaolo?
Present.
Our newest selectmen, Teresa Flynn.
Present.
Daph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar?
Present.
Valerie Clemmie?
Present.
This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please be sure to press star six to mute your device. This meeting will feature public comment. Please wait until I open the item for comment and then press star six to unmute your device. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So we will turn to the first item on the agenda, which is the reorganization of the board. So with that, I will be looking for a motion for the chairperson of the board for the coming year.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I'd like to make a motion, but before I do, I just want to thank you and congratulate you for surviving this year. This has been truly, it's been an incredible year. It's probably, it has been the most difficult year that I've, I've seen since I've been on the board and you had a lot of balls in the air and you really did a great job and you, you really managed somehow to keep smiling through all the meetings and trying to herd us cats together for our special meetings and you just did a great job and I just wanted to know that I, I really appreciate all that you did.
Thank you very much, Mo. It's been a really fun year and I'm very pleased to be able to pass off the virtual gavel and look forward to being able to meet in person hopefully soon.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I would like to move that John Samia be the Chair of the School Committee for the upcoming year.
On the board.
I mean, he can be the Chair of the School Committee, but I think probably the Board of Selectmen might be more appropriate.
I think so, too.
All right, good Freudian slip.
I will second the corrected motion.
Excellent, so we'll do a roll call vote, starting with Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
Ms. Flynn?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So congratulations with Samia. Pass the virtual gavel to you.
Thank you for that virtual gavel. Your service over the past year, but you did an excellent job. Colleagues, next, I'll entertain a motion for Vice Chairperson for the current year.
Mr. Samia?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that John LeBeau be the Vice Chairperson for the coming year.
Second.
We have a first and second, and any other nominations for the Vice Chairperson? There being none, a roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
And then the final office, a motion for clerk for the current year. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to nominate Morris DiPaolo to serve as clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other, having moved in second, and any other nominations for clerk for the upcoming year? There being none, a roll call vote is required for Mr. DiPaolo to serve as clerk for the coming year. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn? Mrs. Flynn? Aye, and then there she is. And Mr. Samia? There we go, perfect. Passed unanimously, both of them do. Next item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants. Do I have a motion?
Roll approval.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn? And Mr. Samia, aye, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of April 27th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Well, a little approval.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn? And Mr. Samia, aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is announcements, reports. Any announcements, colleagues? Before I have a few? Not seeing any. Oh, yes, Mr. LeBeau.
Well, I just wanted to take the opportunity to follow up with what Selectman DiPaolo was saying as he made his motion. I'd like to, in a particular order, I guess I want to welcome our new member, Selectman Flynn. Happy to have you with us. I want to congratulate and thank former Chair Cassavant on, as Selectman DiPaolo said, leading this board through, well, I guess it might have been somewhat like this in 1918, 1919. We'll have to, we'll have to check the town reports on. It was a very challenging year and you did a great job, Beth. And Mr. Chairman, I have great confidence and I wish you a very successful year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a few announcements. I want to echo what Selectman DiPaolo and LeBeau said. Beth, thanks for your leadership over the past year. It was a lot of hard work, obviously unprecedented times. We made a lot of progress as a board, as a community, and you led that, so thank you. Look forward to continuing on that momentum and working on the strategic plan over the coming year and years ahead. So thanks for your leadership. I want to, once again, thank Selectman Jim Kane who left us. We sent him, sent him off on our last meeting in April for 12 years as a selectman on our board, wishing well as moderator. I want to welcome Teresa Flynn to our board. She brings significant business experience from her role as a benefits consultant to large organizations. She's also served the public sector very well in her role for nine years on the Personnel Board, serving our town. She also serves at the state level on the Retirement Benefit Trust Fund. Welcome, Teresa. Look forward to working with you and also thanks for running. The one last announcement I'd like to make relates to the override that passed on the fourth. I just want to thank a lot of people, actually. Our colleagues, the School Committee. It's the best working relationship that I have seen. I want to thank the Finance Committee, Mr. Mizikar, Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Collins, the leadership and transparency over the last year during these times when it's fewer opportunities to have touches with people being virtual. I want to thank all of those who helped with the campaign, the community supporters for 2021. The Ballot Committee that campaigned for a positive vote. I want to highlight many, well, there were many volunteers. Just wanted to also thank you to Michelle Conlon, the Campaign Manager, and, excuse me, the Chair, and Jason Pallett, the Campaign Manager, for their hard work, but there were countless volunteers knocking on doors, making phone calls, reaching out to members of the community to get the vote out, and that was very important. And it really preserves the community and that we all have come to expect through the years. Also want to thank State Representative Kane for her unwavering support during this process. And finally, but most importantly, the residents of the town for believing in your elected officials and the message that was brought forward. And we will stick with our commitment as we had talked about during the process. We look forward to continuing to be transparent, working collaboratively with the other boards, and honoring that agreement that we had with the community and always striving to do better and do great work. And we have great public servants at the leadership positions throughout this town, and I look forward to watching us as a community continue to thrive as we move forward. So that's what I have for announcements, but thank you to everybody involved with that process. Next item on the agenda is Town Managers Report. Mr. Mizikar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple announcements for the board this evening. First and foremost, pleased to announce that the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance, which Shrewsbury is a part of, and of course receive our public health services through, applied for and secured a $240,000 public health grant from the Commonwealth that will help us further develop our business model as a regional public health entity and update our cost analysis so we know that all contributing towns are adequately covering costs and that we're able to continue to offer à la carte services to any towns that want to join us and appropriately recover those costs and keep the successful model moving forward. So we're very thankful for the Commonwealth for that grant for $240,000 and thank the staff at the Worcester Department of Public Health for submitting that application on behalf of the region. Continuing on the financial thing, theme, please report that the town has barely, at the end of April, achieved its local receipts budget estimate. We were just barely over what we budgeted for, which is certainly a good thing as we struggled to get there. I do note that several critical areas, including motor vehicle receipts and meals tax, remain well below their budgeted amount. Motor vehicle excise tax is still $975,000 below. So if it wasn't from strong economic activity in the building market and probably most attributable to headgear driving redevelopment project, we would still be struggling to reach our budget estimate. And this estimate, of course, remains $3 million lower than what we saw in fiscal year 19 and is still less than we, we collected year to date at this point in fiscal year 20. So still significant revenue reduction in comparison to prior years. And then finally, this evening, I wanted to note that we have a couple graduates that are wrapping up their certificate program in local government leadership and management that I know the board is very proud of. I'm certainly very proud of Assistant Manager Lass is very proud of. The Certificate Program, the Local Government Leadership and Management, is designed for municipal employees interested in furthering their professional careers in local government. This is a graduate level class, top of Suffolk University, that's held 25 Fridays from September to May, where students earn 12 graduate level credits. And the Certificate Program links contemporary public management theory with real world practice, covering topics such as budgeting, financial management, challenges in human resources management, strategic leadership. And this year, I'm pleased that we've had two members of the Shrewsbury staff participate. Rosanna Malaver, who is on the Selco IT staff, and our own Valerie Clemmie is wrapping up the program. They have a graduation ceremony this Friday at 6:00. So certainly congratulate Valerie and all the hard work that she's done and Rosanna on the work that she's done in the program. It was fun to work with them throughout the course of the year as they explored new topics of local government and improve their skill sets to the benefit of the community. That's all I have in the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions at all?
No, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
Can I stop him for a second? I also want to welcome formerly Teresa to the board. I'm really happy to have her. Did a great job on Personnel Board and hopefully she's going to be able to jump right in and get up to speed with our board and no doubt that she will. But I also would, would, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't really call out Mr. Mizikar for the just unbelievable financial work and analysis and budget projections that really made the, the the override possible because without that analysis and having good, solid numbers, good projections, I don't think that it would have passed. And we know how much work he put in and put it, he did three months of work, three, four months of work in about a month and a half. And I really want to give you credit, Mr. Mizikar. I think you did a great job. The analysis was just so thorough and complete. I really think it gave us a big, a big lift going into asking for an override, particularly of the size that we, that we did. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for saying that. And I echo that. The, the concept of a stabilization fund and the ability to commit really gets to the granularity of the numbers that were presented and understanding if one number changed, how it would flow through to the bottom line and how the cause and effect would work when either the school budget or the municipal budget, one of the variables would change. And that will be a tremendous asset, not only going forward as we work through this and honor our commitment with the voters, but also with strategic planning, where it really puts it all together for us as we move forward as a community. So thank you from, from all of us, Mr. Mizikar. Next item is item six, COVID-19 report from the Town Manager.
All right, I'm going to share my screen. Go through a very positive COVID-19 update for the board this evening and those watching from the time period of March 19th of 2020, when we had our first COVID-19 positive case indicated through today. We've seen 2,945 cases. However, only 25 of them have occurred since the board's last meeting on April 27th, which is quite a stark change over that two week period. Those lower numbers have moved us into the Commonwealth Screen Status, which is the next to lowest level as we've dipped below 10 cases per 100,000 and 2% positivity in all testing of Shrewsbury residents. And thus, we've shifted our case reporting to the community and occur every Friday afternoon. And so update the community again this coming Friday on the 14th. Unfortunately, board members, still sad that we have to report one additional COVID indicated death since your last meeting, up to 67. Town Hall is now open by appointment. Council on Aging is now open for outdoor activities. You can find more information by calling the COA or visiting their website. Making significant process, progress, excuse me, for vaccines. We've seen now almost 65% of the community that's had at least one dose and 40% of the community is considered 40, or excuse me, considered fully vaccinated. And we are in the period where everyone ages 16 plus, live, work, or study in Massachusetts are now eligible for the vaccine. We also know, of course, that clinics are much more broadly open and many are offering walk-in services. With regards to total case data, we've only seen 18 cases in the month of May. That's six tenths of 1%, and obviously we're on a very favorable trend if we look at the seven, 14, 30, and 60 days. Favorable in all categories as each near term increment is less than the longer its next larger increment. And finally, the overall look at total cases where we've seen a bottoming out several days. I think at least four now over the last 10 where we've seen no cases at all reported within the town. No changes on the, the distribution of the virus throughout each groups within the community. And I encourage everyone to get the vaccine ones, once they're eligible. That's the end of my COVID report.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any questions or comments from the board? Not seeing any. Go to the next item on the agenda. It's a time scheduled appointment. It's a meeting with Tamara Bealan. She's manager at Hebert's Candy Mansion, and she is requesting 16 one-day licenses for various activities at Hebert's. So she is available to us to ask any questions. If you wouldn't mind, although I just introduced you, if you could just tell a little bit about the types of activities. I understand historically that there have been car nights in the past, but what the licenses, what you're looking to do? And then after talking about that, just the board may ask you some questions. So if I turn it over to you, Ms. Bealan.
Thanks, John. Appreciate you guys having me tonight. Just wanted to tell you, I started as the manager in November, which definitely was an interesting time to start, right in the middle of COVID. And when I started, it was really, how are we going to do this? How are we going to survive at Hebert? We had a terrible year and had to shut down, you know, at the Easter before. And it was definitely a struggle. When we opened back up and had just a few people coming in, we, you know, we've been there obviously since 1946, but we've been in Shrewsbury since 1917. And to see us have so few people coming through the doors. But I really worked hard. My background is in event planning and in operations management, but not in candy. So I thought, okay, I can do this. How are we going to do this? And just worked with the community. Everybody's been so amazing in keeping safe. Easter was amazing. We actually had the Easter Bunny outside, which was something new, and we kept six feet apart. And the kids loved it and we only let 30 people in the building and we had an incredible Easter. We, you know, broke records that we didn't think we were going to break for such a bad year. But anyway, that said, it's been a struggle. It's been a real struggle through this. So how, how do we come back and how do we continue to thrive? And also, how do we support our community? My title is Retail and Community Engagement Manager. So part of that is about engaging the community. We have had events in the past. We have had car shows. We've had food outside. They've had DJs that have music. But we have an ice cream window and I don't have the ice cream parlor inside anymore. Just, it wasn't working for COVID. So the ice cream window was outside and I thought, I've got this window. Can I serve beer and wine out of there? So we have three different events going on, our car shows, which are every Thursday, which we have been doing for many, many, many years. And then three events through July, which will have the ice cream window, the dog father truck, which will have his own license and permitting. And also out of the ice cream window, we want to serve beer and wine. We want to open up that huge lawn with all that social distancing for people to bring their camp chairs, their blankets, to kind of make it like a picnic for your community. Bring your friends and family, have an opportunity to be together, to be outside, to enjoy not only Hebert Candy Mansion, but each other and some music. Those are three events. We have car shows every Thursday and then the three music events. And then we also have three paint and sip nights, which in our old ice cream parlor, we have set the tables six feet apart where people will be able to, we have a wonderful artist that will be doing art with people and they'll be able to buy wine during that time. There will be limits to what people can buy. We will have TIPS certified bartenders, including myself. We will have volunteers on site to not only help with parking, but also help. I don't, I, I'm pretty positive we're not going to need anything to do with security, but if it seems that we do, we will hire a police officer. So we have all the contingency plans in place, but those are the events at this point. We are looking to potentially add two more large car shows in September and maybe another event in late August, September, but those have not been planned yet. At this point, I have between this Friday and the end of July, I have 16 events that I've put in for beer and wine and three entertainment licenses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Colleagues, any questions?
I've worked really hard and it's been amazing to try to find the vendors, to find the right people, to figure out how to do this. So it really works. We're lucky we're not in a residential area. So, and, and also, just so you know, the music is only from four to seven, so we're not going late. And, you know, we're, we're keeping it. And we will also encourage social distancing on the lawn unless you're with your family or friends. I think it's going to be something pretty awesome for Shrewsbury and for Hebert.
Mr. DiPaolo? Ms. Bealan? What, what are the plans? They may be tentative, but are you planning holding some kind of events involving beer and wine throughout the year?
No, I mean, the other thing to note is that obviously we have to get insurance for these events. So we don't plan on becoming a bar. This was really something to say, how could we enhance what we have available? Bring more people that might want to enjoy the food and the ice cream and the music. So right now I'm at 16. You can do 30 a year. I would like to potentially have a couple in August and September, but I don't plan, I'm too busy. I don't know if you've been to Hebert, but even when we're not busy, we're really busy in the holidays that beer and wine won't be part of something that we do through October through, after Easter through April. That, what we may have, and I say that now, we may have some wonderful dinner. They've done some big dinners with groups that have come in before, but that has been very random and I'll know far in advance. But I believe that there's 30 total licenses that we can use throughout the year.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Cassavant, did you have a question or comment?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just, I think it sounds wonderful and I certainly want to make sure that we find a way to work with you so that you can find some opportunities to enhance your business. It's been a part of the community for so long. Just looking through your application, it says four to 8:00 PM, but you just said that music would end at seven. Is that just to give you a little bit of a buffer?
Yeah, I mean, and also the bands are expensive. So the, the event will be going on longer. I'll be serving beer and wine longer, but the, the music part of it and for the entertainment licenses will be a little shorter.
Okay, and I have one more question.
We will end because if we're, if we're ending at eight, my last call is going to be 7:30.
Okay, great. And then you mentioned that the ice cream window was closed, but then you mentioned ice cream. So just want to figure out if you're planning to bring back ice cream?
The inside ice cream parlor is closed. The ice cream window will be open. So out of the ice cream window, which I depicted poorly in, in a drawing, but also sent pictures, out of the ice cream window, I have two windows. One will serve beer and wine. The other will serve ice cream.
Okay, so then that leads me to a third question, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I know you said you're going to have TIPS certified servers for the alcohol. What about the ice cream servers? And are we talking about, I know sometimes it's a great job for high school, young, or younger college students who aren't 21. What is your plan for that situation?
Well, you can, you can serve TIPS certification beer and wine at 18. I do employ top high school, my, I have three employees who have just turned 18, who are going into college. Only one of those will get his TIPS certification, so it will be him and myself that will be serving, while the other two girls will be serving ice cream. And they will not intermingle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I just have a couple. The paperwork in here, the certificate of insurance is a one-day event. Would, would you expect? Would you expect to just get blanket coverage or will you be delivering a certificate for every event?
Oh, no, I'm paying two hundred and eighty dollars or something for every event in my insurance. So I'm not sure if what you got didn't show that, but my my insurance is for each event. I have to pay each individual, like I gave you guys each individual license. I cannot get, we, there is not an insurance that can give you a six month or a year that we can get. So each of my insurance is for each event. And I'm and I'm sorry if you don't have that. I can send that immediately tomorrow to Alexandria. I don't read in insurance files very well, so I might have sent, I sent that directly from my insurance person.
Okay, yeah, the certificate of insurance I was looking at, I see the coverage. It's just the, it says just it's a date specific event. That's that's why I was asking.
Maybe it's maybe, maybe there were extra pages and I apologize if I didn't send that. Maybe Alexandra and I didn't look at that properly. But yeah, I mean, to to let you guys know too, we're really taking a risk here to do this. There is a lot of, I mean, not only, you know, buying the beer and wine and then getting the insurance, but we're not just doing it for Hebert. We really are doing it for Shrewsbury and for Western for the community too. It's a lot of money.
And then just a procedural question with some of the zoning Board of Appeals decisions out there. Will you be notifying the building, police and fire departments?
I did send an email to, um. Oh, forgive me. I can't get on my email right now, but I did send that with all of the dates coming up already.
Okay, thank you.
And I know that was something that came out of that last from two thousand thirteen year.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions?
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board at all? So what's the pleasure of the board here? I know we have sixteen licenses in front of us, the sort of pulling up, just thinking out loud here, but I'll see where everyone's at. We can do a blanket approval now of all sixteen. We could take an incremental approach, given the volume, at least in the time that I've been on the board. It's usually one off or a couple here or there. This is thirty hour allowed in a year. It is a little change to the business model. Obviously, being mindful of wanting a local business to thrive. But do we want to take an incremental approach? Things go well and then from there, look to approve the rest. So where's everyone's head at at this?
And just to speak to that really quickly, it's also a matter of, obviously, we have to do marketing and we had to get the insurance and we have to do the, you know, planning for the budget and stuff. That's why I presented the sixteen all in bulk.
Sure. No, thank you. Any thoughts at all?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. DePaulo.
Well, coming into this meeting, I was thinking that perhaps this would have been better as a a beer and wine restaurant license. Because it seemed like there were going to be a lot more than what's on here. But if if Hebert isn't pleading on doing anything and it wouldn't hold them definitely to it between November, not November or somewhere around there and in spring, then I think it would be okay to do these all with one day. I made the, I think the intent of a of a of a one day license is more an event, not as much commercial, but it certainly within the parameters of it. So I think we could, I think we could vote to issue all of these licenses. It it's really only a couple of months and you know, at the end of that, we'll have a good idea of if there are any issues or not and and we can deal with those going forward. So I'm inclined, I'm inclined to vote all of them because I think planning is is important for the applicant. And we can monitor. If there's a problem, we can reschedule license. So I think we'll be okay.
And just to speak to that too, I will obviously take into account, if I have issues, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change things immediately myself. And I would come back and say, I'm canceling this, I'm canceling that. You know, this is, this is important to me on that end also.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Cassavant.
So coming into this meeting, I was thinking that an incremental approach would be my preference. But having heard from Tamara, I really do feel that she has a well thought out plan. She's obviously put a great deal of effort into obtaining licenses, filling out the applications rather, and obtaining the proper insurance. And I I really do feel comfortable that she has a plan in place whereby we could approve all of these. And then if we do come into some issues, I think that she would be very easy to work with in order to resolve them if she didn't already come up with a plan on her own for resolution. So it's just where I'm thinking now.
Anyone else? I'm, I agree with you. Actually, I was thinking, consistent with what both Selectman DePaulo and Cassavan said, again, the ice cream window and sort of serving the the beer and wine through that is a little bit of a bar, a little beyond what a one day license is. But this is one example where I'm glad and thank you for coming before us to help answer the questions and really showing the confidence that you had behind the application, that you have your ducks in a row, that you're really picking up the pieces and have gone beyond that to really thrive in light of COVID. And you've been a longstanding business and good standing. So I'm I'm comfortable with it as well. I appreciate your presentation and the how prepared you are and how really how everything is lined up, the confidence behind it. It's went a long way for me, so I'm comfortable with it as well. And if and if we're all comfortable with it, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Oh, please, Mr. LeBeau, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. I didn't think I had one and all of a sudden I do. So, okay, folks are gonna go to the dedicated fine window and be able to purchase a drink. What, okay, then what happens? I mean, do they have free, you know, free access to the entire site? Is it controlled or contained at all?
It is, it is contained into the three main lawns that are in the front of the building. And the way that we will have the traffic going in and out, which will provide an amount of safety. We do have some barriers going up so that people can go from the window to the lawn. We have, we have an entrance and an exit on each side so that people aren't driving through that area. Yes, it will be contained. I would also let you know that people will obviously have to show I D. They will not be able to buy more than two drinks at a time. And there will be people at the entrance and exits to make sure that, you know, nobody is leaving with alcohol. There's, it's plastic containers. There will be trash cans at all the, on all the lawn so that they can easily get rid of that. We have porta potty. So it's it's very contained in a specific area. They won't be allowed to hang out in the parking lot drinking. It will be, it's on the lawn. And I hope you each will come with a blanket or your camp chair and hang out and join us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If there aren't any, entertain a motion, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board approve the sixteen one day beer and wine licenses for Hebert Candy, five seventy-four, Haggford, Shrewsbury.
Second.
I mean, moved in seconded a roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau.
Hi.
Mr. DePaulo.
Hi.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Hi.
Mrs. Flynn.
Hi.
Mr. Samia, I motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Yes, Mr. DePaulo.
Before, before we stop, do we have to vote and is it, wasn't there a outdoor entertainment license requested?
There's three.
Three, okay.
Yeah, there, there, there's three that are part of, they're, each of those is also has additionally a beer and wine. So that there are three ones that do have bands. They are not Led Zeppelin or or, well, obviously not. But they're more of quartet fun, family bands, with family music. And they will be located right in the middle part where our flag is, there is electricity and that's where the bands will be and they'll be there from four to seven.
Okay, but don't we have to vote on on those licenses?
Oh, those three, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, Mr. LeBeau.
Mr. Chairman, move the board approve the entertainment licenses that are associated with three of the beer and wine, one of the alcohol applications.
Second.
Welcome. We haven't moved in seconded a roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau.
Hi.
Mr. DePaulo.
Hi.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Hi.
Mrs. Flynn.
Hi.
Mr. Samia, I motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. DePaulo, for pointing that out. Ms. Bealan, thank you for coming before us this evening. Good luck.
Please, please, please come visit me and say hello when you're there. Thanks, you guys. Have a great night. I appreciate you. Bye.
Thank you. Next, next item on the agenda is a time scheduled appointments, a meeting with Ann Garwood from Ragged Hill Cider Company to review and act on an application for a farmer's winery license pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section fifteen F, to sell at the Shrewsbury Farmers Market at ninety-eight Maple Ave on Wednesdays from June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one to September twenty ninth, twenty twenty-one, from the hours of two thirty to six thirty.
Chairman, Sammy.
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
Chairman, I need to accuse myself in this conversation to avoid a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau.
Due to my, due to my, due to my job.
So, welcome, Ms. Ms. Garwood. Thank you for coming before us this evening. If you could tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do and a little bit about your company.
Sure. Thank you so much for having me and thank you to Commissioner LeBeau for all the hard work that you do as your role with M D R and supporting our small farms and farmers markets and the Commonwealth, especially this past year that's been so challenging for small business like ours. I'm in Westbrook Field, Massachusetts. We have an orchard where we grow apples, peaches, pears, raspberries, blueberries. And we also make hard cider and hard cider has been an integral part of our business plan in the last four years since two thousand seventeen to help support our our agricultural business and and help it thrive. So in that time, I've been attending farmers markets, Sturridge, Hadley, Westbrook Field. I previously attended the Worcester Canal District at Crompton Market until it was dissolved last year due to COVID. And I've been invited to attend the Shrewsbury Farmers Market and I'm really excited about the prospect of being a part of of your community and the farmers market that I've heard some things about. So we only use our fruit to make our cider. We sell them in wine bottles, seven hundred and fifty milliliter wine bottles. And we attend farmers markets to to support our our orchard business, to let people know about agriculture, about where their food is coming from, about the process of making our hard cider. And in years past, we've been able to sample those those ciders. As we understand COVID, we haven't been able to do that and unless those restrictions are lifted, we won't plan on doing that this year either. Do you have any questions? Any other questions? I'm not really sure what else you'd like to know.
No, that's good. Thank you. The, for me, the, I believe, actually, on the way back from your mass, I visited your premises. If I recall, off of nine and
Yeah, absolutely.
And happen to come across it. It's a very nice, nice facility. The reason coming in front of us this evening, it's just, I think, given that, I think it was four years ago that the farmers market moved onto town property. And I believe this is the first instance where alcohol would be sold on the property. Understanding that and where where my head's at, but I want to open it up to to my colleagues is that generally I'm fine with it. I think the farmers market's outstanding. I think that it, I have no issue with carrying away. The only thing that I wouldn't want to see is just, I saw that the idea would possibly to have testing on the site in terms of sampling. That's the only thing that I would, that I'd prefer not to have, understanding of COVID restrictions. We couldn't. But even hopefully, as as we get to light at the end of the tunnel, that still would not have product sampling on the site. But generally, to cash and carry, I'm comfortable with. But that's, that's where my head's at. But I wanted to open it up to the rest of the board to see if they have any questions or comments. Anyone at all?
Okay, I'm good.
Yeah, it's great. It's, thanks for coming before us. Assuming there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion. Their motion.
Mr. Chairman. I I I move the board approve the application of Ann Godwood, Ragged Hill Cedar Company for a pharma winery license pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section fifteen F, to sell at the Farmers Market at ninety-eight Maple Ave on Wednesdays from June sixteenth to September twenty ninth, from two thirty to six thirty P M.
Second.
I mean, we moved in second in a roll call vote is required, Mr. DePaulo.
Hi.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Hi.
Mrs. Flynn.
Hi.
Mr. Samia, I motion passes four zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Garwood. Thank you for coming before us this evening.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it and look forward to seeing you all in Shrewsbury.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a meeting with the Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer Division for an update on hexavalent chromium and the PFAS pilot testing. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'm pleased to have Mr. Rowley and Mr. Howland here this evening. Mr. Rowley will be providing an update to the board about a lot of hard work that his team have put into coming up with some of the most complex challenges we have in the drinking water system. We heard last meeting from his colleague, Mr. Snowden, and this is just continued effort on our focus in improving our public infrastructure for the benefit of the community. So through the chair, I would have Mr. Rowley provide an update on the two pilot projects that he's been working on.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. We're also joined by Paul Howard from Tatum Howard, who is our consulting engineering firm, who has been assisting with the piloting. I have a few slides. We have completed the hexavalent chromium piloting and we are just about to begin the PFAS piloting. So it's, it's a good time at sense to to talk about this. And also, we're seeing some regulations in Massachusetts take hold, requiring water systems to test for PFAS. And we're subsequently seeing water systems be impacted by those directions. Share my screen. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so our hexavalent chromium pilot study, as I mentioned, we have concluded that. That was done with our consulting engineers, Tatum Howard and sub consultant Adage Water Technologies, who has developed these technologies for the removal of chrome. We started this pilot in September of two thousand twenty. We did delay it a little bit for, due to COVID and having to bring folks into the treatment plant, take delivery of materials. But we were able to 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 complete that by December. There were two technologies that were piloted simultaneously. The Biota Biological Filtration System and then Ion Exchange Filtration System. For the pilot study, the hexavalent chromium level For the pilot study, the hexavalent chromium levels were dosed to be increased to 100 micrograms per liter or parts per billion. Just to put that into perspective, over the past two years, the range of the level of hexavalent chromium in our finished blend water has been between 2.5 micrograms per liter to 4.3 micrograms per liter with an average of 3.4 micrograms per liter. Both systems were successful in removing the hexavalent chromium. The Biota system was piloted using the combined raw water from the wells and if chosen would be designed to treat the water from the home farm wells where hexavalent chromium has been detected. We haven't found it in all of our well sites. So we also have a well site on Sewell Street and then we have the Lambert's Wells. But there's essentially three wells at the home farm site that are impacted. The ion exchange process has to be done after the manganese removal. So the water will go through the filtration process and then would be treated. And that would require us to treat all of our flow for, for the ion exchange versus with the Biota, we would, we would only need to do the wells that we chose. So our consultants are currently reviewing all the results. They're looking into capital and operating costs. And we expect to come back to the board with a full report in June. And there was an article in the fall in the community advocate that was very comprehensive, if anybody didn't get a chance to catch it. So with that concluded, we are now starting the PFAS pilot study, which we started talking about back in October of 2019. PFAS are per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, also known as PFAS. And they're a group of manmade chemicals that have been used in, or manufactured, using a variety of industries since the 1950s. And if you recall, there's a lot of items that have these compounds in them, including firefighting foam, nonstick cookware, waterproof clothing, you know, a lot of, a lot of things that bring comfort to life do have these substances in them. This pilot study will be conducted with Tatum Howard as well as Blue Leaf, which is a company out of Charlton. They are currently mobilizing all of the materials and equipment and they are scheduled to begin within the next few weeks. The pilot study is expected to take six months and will test five different media, one granular activated carbon and four ion exchange resins. We received our final approval from Mass DEP to conduct this pilot study on March 11th, 2021. I did want to touch on some of the regulations that have changed in the last, within the last year. On October 2nd, 2020, Mass DEP established the Massachusetts Maximum Contaminant Level, the MMCL, for the sum of six PFAS compounds. PFOS, PFOWA, PFHXS, PFNA, PFHPA and PFEA. Just to put that in perspective, when we send samples out to the lab, we use the EPA 537.1 method, which analyzes the water for 18 different compounds. But for this regulation, it's referred to as the PFAS 6. And this is an amendment to the Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulation. And it has established the maximum contaminant level of those six compounds of 20 nanograms per liter or parts per trillion. And there are currently no federal PFAS drinking water standards. The US EPA does have a health advisory of 70 nanograms per liter for the sum of PFOWA and PFOS. I did want to touch upon, we've been proactive about this in Shrewsbury, engaging in voluntary testing since the fall of 2019. Now there are actually regulations requiring systems to test for, for PFAS. As of January 1st, 2021, large systems serving more than 50,000 people had to test. As of April 1st, 2021, systems serving between 10,000 and 50,000 people were required to test and that includes Shrewsbury, obviously. And then in October, on October 1st, 2021, systems serving 10,000 or fewer will be obligated to test. Again, we started testing in the summer of 2019. We conducted public outreach in October. And at that point, we had conducted two rounds of testing with an average of 13.56 parts per trillion. Since our levels are greater than 10 parts per trillion, but less than 10 parts per trillion, the new regulations require us to conduct monthly testing of our finished blend water, which is all sources that we pump through the treatment plants into the distribution system. Our overall average since the summer of 2019, 2019 is 13.41 parts per trillion, with recent results being 15.2 in March and 15.5 parts per trillion in April. And we have a lot more information, including that document we did for public outreach back in October of 2019 on our website.
Thank you for the presentation. Board members, any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
I think I missed it, but through, to Mr. Rowley through you, if I could. When, when did you say we're starting or you started? Doing the testing for PFOS? Not, not the testing, I'm sorry, the pilot program?
We are starting that now. So the contractor is mobilizing, bringing equipment into the treatment plant and then they expect to be fully up and running in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, one quick question.
Yes, please, Mrs. Cassavan.
For Mr. Rowley. So you mentioned when you were talking about the hexchrome that there's one process for removal that only treats the wells where we have found hexchrome. So I guess my question is, couldn't we eventually find hexchrome in other wells, even if it's not there now?
That is a great question. Jeff, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yes, so when we, through the chair, when we first identified that we had exochrome in our wells, we tested each of our wells along with our finished water and has determined that it is a narrow plume that comes down from Plantation Street toward the home farm wells. Is it kind of comes through the, what was Metzo's property towards us? It's not, doesn't appear to originate from Metzo's property. It originates from Plantation Street or up that way somewhere. So we're confident that the hexchrome is isolated to the home farm well site and not Sewell, which is on the other side of Holden Street and then Lambert, which is on the other side of 290.
Thank you.
And if I could just say, we do test all the wells just for our information, any, you know, just so we know if anything is moving around.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a two-part question. What type of capital investment are we looking at if we were to ballpark it? Are we talking seven figures, we, six figures? What are we looking at? And then the second part of that question, irrespective of the amount, is this something we think that the American Rescue Plan can help, but help pay for? The second part can be towards Mr. Mizikar, but the first part, Mr. Harland or Mr. Rowley?
Approximate cost, I think we probably should refer to our consultant, Paul Howard. He probably has a better understanding of potential costs. Not to put you on the spot, Paul, but.
Yes, we'd definitely be looking in the seven figure range and, you know, five to seven million dollars, somewhere in that vicinity.
Okay. Thank you. And is this something, Mr. Mizikar, we think that the American Rescue Plan could possibly help us with?
And so we haven't gotten through all the guidelines, but we do know that anything that's permissible through the state revolving fund program, if you could apply for use of those funds, then you can apply your ARP funds towards those. So I do believe this, this would be eligible for the use of those funds and we certainly will get to the bottom of that. And if we can use it, take advantage of that program since it's in place.
Great, thank you.
Excuse me for, and the SRF program actually has a set aside for PFAS specifically for PFAS.
Great. Good information, thank you, Mr. DiPaolo.
Just, if I could follow up on Ms. Cassavan's question. If, if something did happen and for some reason we found, we found this at a different well site and we're doing it only at the original site. Are we talking this cost, I know it's hard to quantify the dollars, but are we talking spending this much money at each site? If we do it this way?
No, I think we were talking about treating the, all of the home farm wells right on the home farm site. So that would be the five home farm wells and we wouldn't treat the two wells from Lambert and there will eventually be two wells from Sewell. But we would look at the facility that and be able to expand it to accept those to other sources if, in fact, something was found at those sources.
Okay, thank you, that answered the question, thank you.
Anything else? Great, thanks for your presentation and just to confirm the informations on the website.
I will, I will post the slides to the website and add some updates to the existing information.
Great, terrific, thank you. As we come up on town meeting a couple of years ago, that had been a request and we've kept up to date. So thank you for those efforts and thanks in advance for putting these up. So thank you.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
You too, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the BL RFP Committee and presentation by the committee and representatives from the development team relative to the Beal School property. I'll turn it over to the Chair of the BL RFP Committee, Mr. DiPaolo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to give you a little historical context. This committee, as it named, the RIS committee, actually was formed in 2017. And our first meeting was in February of 2018. So this, this has been a long haul. We did take a hiatus in the middle for a few months, waiting to see if the new Beal School passed the debt exclusion to build it. Because otherwise the work would have been obviously for not. So anyways, we were recharged as the RFP Committee to help work on the RFP after we made recommendations to the Board of Selectmen in July of 2019. So I'd just like to take a minute, if I could, and introduce the members of the committee. Keith Baldinger, Paul, Bob Cox, I don't know, there he is. Paul Capinello, Bob Holland, Mary Beth Lynch, Dave Lyons and myself. Over the years, there were a few other people, but most of this group has been the core since, since the beginning. And I'd also like to mention that we had a lot of support, tremendous support from Ms. Loss, from the Planning Department. We, we had great advice from Catherine Madden of Madden Cleaning Group, Claire O'Neil, Mass Development, which actually funded the RFP process. Nate Kelly of Horsey Witten, who actually was the lead consultant on the project. And John Tremontosi, Landwise Advisors, give us a financial perspective of the RFP. So I just wanted to mention those people because they did a great job getting us here. As you know, we put out the RFP. It was based on the recommendations that were accepted by the Board of Selectmen. And initially, we were very encouraged that there were numerous organizations that, that downloaded the RFP. But in the end, when we got the, we came to the deadline and the RFPs would do, we had one responded and that is the group that's before us tonight, Civicco and Greenlee Development. So we sent the letter to the board on March 24th, dated March 24th, with our recommendation to, to the board that the board should consider moving forward with Civicco and Greenlee for final review and decision on finalizing a sale. The reasons that we did that were that the RFP by this group met the technical requirements of the, of the RFP. It appears to satisfy the development criteria for the RFP. Civicco and Greenlee understand the intent and the aspirations of the RFP. And we believe that they showed qualifications based upon their other projects. And also we've had the financials reviewed and we believe that they have the financial means to do the project. And finally, the references were favorable. A test of the letter of March 24th, the committee did add some, I had a loss for a word there for a second, but project, potential project and program components and performance benchmarks that the board, if it decides to go forward, we would like that you consider those in the land disposition agreement. So after many months of work, a couple of meetings with, with Civicco and Greenlee, we are here now to have them present to you. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to turn this over to the Civicco Greenlee Group to make their presentation.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, this is Taylor Bearden speaking, I'm going to share my screen. Can you see this?
It's coming up, there we go, yep, thank you.
Okay, so my name again is Taylor Bearden, I'm a partner at Civicco Development and Kristen Loss has advised us of a format that we're sharing with you tonight about the proposed project at Beal Commons. I'm going to introduce the members of the team that you're likely going to hear from tonight. We'll keep this presentation brief, we were advised we had about 10 to 15 minutes. Likely you'll hear from Andrew Consigli, the managing partner of Civicco. And I'm obviously here, partner, and then John Dabella, financial analyst on the Greenlee Development Team, our partner, Alex Sekirsky, Bree Houghton and Brady Plankton. So my primary goal for this presentation is to provide a sense of confidence to the Board of Selectmen about our qualifications because this is essential partnership with the town of Shrewsbury and it's our, our goal to instill reasonable confidence based on our, our experience, but also based on the proposed project we have in front of you that we understand the development scope and the intention of the Town Center District and that we have the experience from similar projects to be able to deliver on that shared goal. Currently, and Andrew will walk through some of these projects, we have active or completed projects in many similar towns and cities in the Commonwealth. We're presently working in Lincoln and Reading in particular on very similar scoped projects and Andrew can explain that in a little bit. Bree, can you give a little bit of background on Greenlee and then I'll finish with Civicco?
Sure thing, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So Greenlee Development was created in 2020. We are three local real estate services professionals and we have a diverse experience. Alex is a registered architect, he's worked on commercial and residential projects. He's also a member of three boards in the town midway. Brady Bankston is our licensed general contractor and he as well has worked on both residential and commercial projects of a variety of scopes. I am a licensed commercial real estate. I am a licensed commercial real estate agent and I specialize in acquisitions, leasing and dispositions of commercial property. We have overlapped over the past several years doing a variety of projects and we decided to come together to form this development group. Because we realized we had a common goal to help create and impact our local communities. What makes us unique? We're able to curate, design, build and lease our projects. We connected with Civicco because we are inspired by their project style and we realized that we're a very good balance between the six of us. And we are looking forward to talking more about the Beal Commons and creating an amazing project for and with the Town of Shrewsbury.
Thanks, Bree. So Andrew's going to walk you through the projects, but before I do that, I want to explain our approach to the team that we assembled for Beal Commons. So our, our goal and a lot of the work that Civicco does is in town centers, which are, which are very unique in their, you know, the New England heritage and history kind of culminates in the town center experience. So our team that we put together for this, we wanted to make sure that they had an understanding of what we were getting at when we talk about activation in the Shrewsbury Town Center. For working with Joe, the architect out of Somerville, Bowling Engineering, who had worked on the Shrewsbury Library. Sustainable Comfort, a nearby Worcester green building consulting firm that has worked on many of Civicco's projects. And Madison Management, headquartered in Shrewsbury. And is the project manager for some of the projects that are very similar, or sorry, property manager for some of the projects, very similar in scope to what we're presenting here. A little bit of background for the board, just to kind of share how we have already collaborated a little bit with the reuse committee and the town consultants. After submission of the RFP, we've had two interviews, one specifically with the Beal Reuse Committee and one with the consultants hired by the town. And now we're culminating our presentation to the board. I want to call out a couple of things. First, I really appreciate the Beal Reuse Committee's work so far. We were able to work through a couple of preliminary issues in the proposal. And explain the points where we think we have some flexibility in this project. And the town consultants also provided some key feedback there. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the Chair in particular, Mr. DePaulo. And Kristen Loss, who provided a lot of the guidance here for us. Andrew, I'm going to hand you off to walk through the Civicco projects to provide a little outline on our experience.
Great. Thank you. Can everyone hear? Just want to make sure.
Yes.
My name's Andrew Consigli, a member of Civicco. I'll go through a few projects, three projects that have been dated within the past few. One project that we currently have brought through permanent or take the permit, but was awarded the RFP just recently. So the first project I'd like to just discuss is Abbey Road in Sherborne. It is the old Peace Abbey, right in the center of town. It was 18 homes arranged in a pocket neighborhood style development. So a neighborhood within a neighborhood essentially. It incorporated two historic buildings into, into the development. It also included a land swap agreement with the town and it was also approved at town meeting for the zoning overlay. And as most of our projects do have certified, certified and also won a design award from the National Association of Home Builders. So this is a project that Oriolanding, which is the next, actually, so actually you can flip through the slides, Taylor, sorry, didn't see that. So you can see crafts and style development with, with Abbey Road. So Oriolanding is a 60-unit mixed income apartment community. And this was focused around a community garden and a wonderful public space at the center of the project. That is a self-facing landscape courtyard. This was in partnership with the Lincoln Affordable Housing Trust where they loaned us $1 million to support the affordable housing component of the project, which was 25% of the 60 units. This was also designed as lead for homes. And energy star rated as well. And we're actually putting solar panels on it, on the roof within the next few months. This was a unanimous approval from all town boards and also a zone change that was approved at town meeting as well. And go to the next project, which is just being completed this month up in Reading, Massachusetts. It's a 55-unit transit oriented apartment building, mixed use, retail on the ground floor. And this was permitted under the state's chapter 40R, which is the smart growth housing program that the state has. We received $1.4 million from the DHCD in their annual affordable, affordable housing grant. And what you don't see here is a big self-facing courtyard that covers about 60 parking spaces in the back of the retail. And again, this was also lead for home certified. The next project and, and one that hasn't been built yet. And we were just signed the LDA agreement with the Town of Winchester. We went through a pretty competitive RFP process. This is a 60-unit mixed income apartment building next to the new MBT, or it's the existing MBTA station that is going to be renovated in the next couple of years. This was again, just approved at Springtown meeting. And, you know, we're, we're looking forward to this. This was actually partnered with another developer, Trugworth Company is the same developer we are partnered with on the Reading project. So that was been a, been a very successful partnership. So if anyone would like to visit any of these projects, the ones that were built, you know, we'd happy to arrange a tour. So now I'll turn it over to Alex from Greenlee and he can discuss the building design and comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, everyone. So the current proposed design iteration really aims to achieve a few things. It promotes a sense of place for this site and really serves as a gateway to the downtown district. It also looks to be a amenity to the town by developing mixed use amenities within the site. In particularly the commercial street level in the northern building, which is building one. Also creating and highlighting pedestrian access and vehicular accessibility as well. So currently the proposed program is 50 to 65 residential apartment units. We are looking at various scales and mixes of commercial space, which we'll go into in later slides. And creating that balance with ample parking for the community at large. And then a variety of open spaces, if you can go to the next slide, Taylor. So the site plan as it currently is laid out, we are preserving the World War I Memorial at the front of the site and maintaining that curb cut for fire access and safety. But also most importantly, activating the front of that building for potential park area and event space. I know that the farmer's market is in town and there's similar opportunities where we can use that front entrance drive for special events only. The front building one really looks to emulate the downtown district in terms of scale and streetscape activation. We have the main curb cut away from the intersection to allow access to the back of the buildings for services. We have a variety of different seating and community areas within the green spaces as well as a pocket park or a potential dog park on the site. And then a green space buffer at the lower right of the site to help buffer against the adjacent neighbors. So really this plan, you know, there's, there was a lot of due diligence in how we laid this out and thought about this initial design. But really we're, we're playing off of the Beal School itself and trying to utilize that footprint and the scale and sort of respecting what has been here for such a long time. While also activating the site and getting a nice mixed use by having this connection between the two buildings. If you go to the next one. So in terms of aesthetics and how we are looking at this, this, this sort of mimics Oriolanding and some of the other developments that Civicco has done. It's really a New England style development. You know, it looks to mimic some of the downtown features with the streetscape activation of the commercial spaces while also raising up to the residential levels to create privacy for the residences. So we felt that the scale and size and the materiality that we were proposing really fits in well to the site and to the neighborhood. And then finally, this is the perspective at the World War I Memorial. We're looking towards Main Street. So I, I think this, you know, initially we were looking at, well, we reached out really to quite a few different local businesses, which we'll look at in a little bit. But having this street activation and really setting back the main larger building, utilizing the existing footprint of Beal seemed to make a lot of sense for us in terms of activating the front of this site as a gateway to the downtown. And I'll hand this, go ahead, Taylor.
I'm going to take this one. Thank you. So here we would like to highlight for you the variety densities that Alex briefly spoke about in both the residential and the commercial components of the project. As you can see under residential, we've got scenarios A through D with a variety of unit counts and square footages per unit. So we've kind of talked this through amongst ourselves. And of course, this is going to be something that we hope that the Town of Shrewsbury will work with us on to find a great balance of both residential and commercial. For our commercial tenants, we have quite a bit of scale here and some flexibility and space. We can go anywhere from 5,000 square feet up to about 20,000. You can go right ahead to the next one. Excellent. Thank you. So these are the tenants that we have curated for this project as of now. Each of these uses, we've spoken to directly. These individuals are local companies who have done very well throughout COVID. We have a gym. We have a burger company. We have a brewery as well as some fabulous coffee as well as tea. So we wanted to put together a really nice mix that was going to complement and enhance the streetscape, draw some foot traffic, create kind of a come and enjoy the space sort of vibe. But we also have quite a bit of flexibility. We've been talking a lot about daycare. So we have plenty of options for what we can create for you here, but we've done a good bit of due diligence and we feel that this is a really nice mix for what the Town of Shrewsbury asked us for in the RFP.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brady. I'm with Greenlee and so we just wanted to talk to our goal is with the town is obviously to partnership. That's how we see this and to bring a multi-general generational living to the downtown to serve the existing businesses and the businesses that we're proposing to be able to actually bring to the downtown. We met with a lot of local businesses and the residents in the town and tried to just really hear out what the town needed. As so that we could actually bring a project that was a partnership and not just plopping something down into your, into your town. We wanted to respect that. So we also took into consideration and we want to show you some of the, the financial benefits that we're bringing. And I can just run through those really quickly. That would be the project cost. I mean, the project taxes that we'd be generating would be $150,000 to $200,000 of annual tax revenue to the town as well as a construction budget. The permit fees for a construction budget of about $16 million. All the completed projects to the, to date are lead certified. And we're also bringing in teams like Sustainable Comfort to help consult and help to build a project that is lead certified. Moving on. So we're going to be adding three to five businesses. As Bree said, we have a, have a range of square footages that we're going to be incorporating into the design. But we have three to five businesses that would be bringing right into the downtown as well as new residents. And ideally driving traffic from surrounding towns to create a more vitalized downtown center. So activation of the down, of the town center to create a destination that people want to come to. And that's all I got. Up till you muted.
Better?
Yeah.
Is the presentation back?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. I want to highlight a couple of the opportunities I think we have to mutually create a better project. So first and foremost, the Town Center District zoning, which was sort of pending during this RFP process, does not have a parking minimum. So I think it's really important that we outline for you here that we are open to identifying what that right parking ratio is based on the proposed number of uses. And in particular, based on the existing needs of the neighborhood for open space and green space amenities on the site. And lastly, a figuring out how to inject the right commercial mix such that we activate the streetscape and create a sufficient destination, but still are mindful of sort of the residential and commercial balance that is preferable in the Town Center District based on the myriad planning efforts that have been done in the last decade, but most recently the Town Center District rezoning. So we are now open to questions. I will hand it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your presentation and thank you for your patience. As we have a couple of items before you, any questions or comments from the board, Mr. DePaulo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Civicco and Greenlee for that presentation. To get highlighted, the discussions that we had. I just wanted to inform, inform the board, I guess, is, I'm not sure that's the right word, but, but the plans that were shown were site plans that were conceptual. And could be subject to change through discussions with the developer. We believe that those plans showed that in our discussions after showed that this team understood, excuse me, what the, the RFP committee and the consultants believe the town was looking for, particularly the open space down at the end of the project around, around Wesleyan Street. So I, I just wanted to caution everyone that, that this is a conceptual proposal. It, it may change, it may not change, but that's part of the process that the board would engage in if the board decides to go forward and bring this to the next step. So I, I just wanted to let everybody know that that design is not cast in stone.
Mr. Chair, may I make a quick comment? So we had presented some subsequent site plan options to the Beal Reuse Committee. And those of course are, are not shared here because we want to provide the board the most consistent presentation with our RFP response. But consistent with our experiences in Lincoln, Sherborne and Reading, this process is very collaborative. And that begins very early on and we're willing to start that process during the site planning phase.
You muted this, Tim.
Do it once. Mrs. Cassavan. Thank, thank you, Mr. DePaulo.
Thank you. I just would like to thank the Beal Reuse Committee for the many years that they have spent with this project. I know that at one point they thought their work was finished and then the Board of Selectmen retasked them to take us through the RFP process. Because of their expertise with what we are looking for in the center of town and what's a really important property. I really like what I've seen here tonight. I especially like that the, it seems that the the World War I Memorial isn't moving. It seems to be staying where it is. It seems to be staying where it is and it's really a centerpiece of the new development behind it. I did notice that some of your, one of your slides mentioned preservation of historic buildings, but I believe there's no preservation of the current Beal School. Am I correct in that assumption?
Through the chair, that's accurate.
Okay. And that's not surprising. So if I just could ask one more question, or actually it's more of a comment. I'm glad to see that there's a buffer. I know that there's a lot of concern from the residents who live behind the property and around the property. Just concerned about parking and, and noise or lights. What other kinds of reassurances can you give to people who might be watching and live in that neighborhood as far as like, and I know these are preliminary, but like distance of between the buildings and where homes begin, that sort of a thing for people who might have questions at home.
Alex, can you respond?
Sure, Beth. So I think we're going to be working with Bowler to really identify a good landscape plan that helps buffer some of, some of the development. All the lighting that we've done on developments will be dark sky compliant, so there's no overspill of lighting into the residences. And then in terms of the mixed use and commercial tenants that will be here, we'll also want to monitor their use of operations and when they're getting deliveries. So there's not late deliveries or dumpster removal, things like that. We will definitely consider all of those things to make sure that we are very friendly neighbors to everyone around us.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Can I ask you a few questions as well? Just in terms of, you bring forward a lot of impressive prior work. Have you had to deal with remediating property as well as part of your, say restoration of existing parcels or in connection with developing a new, new building on a property, given the age of Beal and the potential for asbestos? And have you gone through properties where you've had to remediate as part of the overall project?
Andrew, can you take this?
Yeah, so on, I can just talk about each project very quickly, but the ones that you've seen, Abbey Road, for example, and Sherborn, there was two existing buildings on site, historic buildings. One historic building, we completely renovated and preserved the outside and turned it, converted into a single family home. And then the other building was also historic, but was structurally insufficient. So we actually tore the building down, but actually rebuilt it as a replica because we worked with the town and the town loved the architecture of the building and didn't want to, didn't want to, you know, take that away. The project in Lincoln or Landing, we actually took a, the historic farmhouse and moved it to the center of the site to be the, the community garden house. And we dedicated it actually to the historic commission, kind of to working with us, a member of the historic commission during the Development Act. And then the project in Reading was, was probably the most similar to Shrewsbury, where it was an existing brick building that we tore down. And we built the new development, new building, 60 unit, 55 unit development in its place. There was a sewage sewer easement going right under the building, so we had to be careful and mindful of that. And the property was also historic. The building wasn't historic, but the property was. It used to make those old picture corners that you see in photo albums. And so we had to create a community room within our development celebrating the history of the site. So we are very used to sort of the historic aspects of sites, but also, you know, when appropriate, we, we do build completely new. So hopefully that answers your question. You know, it's a little bit long-winded, but.
Thank you. And then another question, just in terms of how you finance your projects. I saw it seems to be a combination of debt or equity. Do you continue to, is your model that sometimes you'll get debt and you'll continue to manage it and pay it off with, with rents? Or is it sometimes you drop it in an entity and get equity partners in it and drive, manage it that way? What's your typical model for development, developed properties?
Yeah, Taylor, I can probably take that as well. Typically on a project like this, you would, you, you can finance probably about 70%, 70, 75% of development through debt. And then you, it requires the remaining is equity. For a, say, a 15 million to $20 million project, you're going to require around $5 million, $4 million, $5 million of debt of equity. We raised that privately through friends and family. The, the debt is assembled through a local bank, you know, that we've used in the areas. So typically that's how our projects work. And, you know, you have a GP and an LP, meaning a general partner is us as a developer. And you have a limited partner, is a series of limited partners made up of anywhere from five to 10 limited partners that provide the equity for the project.
Thank you. One quick follow-up. So do you typically keep those partnerships? Or do you ultimately flip them as your model, like a lot of the parcels that you've shown? Or I guess maybe they're relatively new, so the answer may be premature, but do you keep them or do you ultimately flip them?
No, it depends on the investment group that you, that is involved in the project. Some projects we do, we do come to market right after we build them and then some we don't. Some we, we hold on long-term. For example, the project in Reading that we're finishing this month, we are planning on holding that for a long time because the investment group around that wants it to be an asset for a long time. Whereas the project in Lincoln, we're entertaining offers actually currently from people in the market, from other develop, from other owners in the market. However, depending on where that number comes in, we may end up just refinancing it ourselves and keeping it long-term and sort of buying out some partners that want to be bought out and not stay in long-term. So it all depends on the investment group that you're building behind the project.
Okay, thank you. And then one, one last question for the group, if you don't mind. So in terms of the retail space, understanding, looking through your literature and hearing from the RFP committee, it's a very collaborative process. That's in your materials as well. And I, that's definitely come through this evening. How did you come up with the retail space, the coffee and tea shop, the gym, the, the burger restaurant? What, how do you come to that conclusion? What kind of due diligence did you do there? Did you look at the market or what was the process, if you wouldn't mind?
Bree, can you please take that?
Sure. So short answer, a little bit of all of those things. We definitely looked at the market. That was part of my contribution to the project. We looked at Shrewsbury Center specifically. We wanted to make sure what we were looking at, we were comparing apples to apples. So we weren't necessarily bringing in entities from White City. We weren't necessarily comparing those two things. But we were looking at what is the current feel, the current energy of Shrewsbury? And what is the RFP and the town kind of asking us for? So we looked at it as a smaller town center, looking for walkable, accessible, fun, easy, complimentary entities. And so that's kind of where we started looking and we stuck local. We spoke to the owners of each of those entities that we selected to make sure that they were going to, number one, be interested, number two, be viable, and number three, be as excited as we are.
Thank you.
Can I add to that, Mr. Chair?
Oh, please do. Thank you.
I think, I think the viability is the word there too. We initially actually reached out to a lot of the local food trucks that are constantly at the farmers markets and the, the events in town. But the, they're, they weren't ready for a brick and mortar. They, they loved the project that we proposed, but they weren't ready. And I think the companies that we sort of approached in the second round are viable and they are looking for expansion. So I think that's kind of also what led us to landing with them as well. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions before I ask Mrs. Loss as to what next steps are or could be? Anything else from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DePaulo, please.
I just wanted to say as a, as a member of the, of the RFP committee, that I, I, and I think it came out at the hearing tonight. These folks understand what we're looking for. And the other iterations of, of the site plan, which they developed based on input after, showed flexibility in their attitude towards how they were going to develop the property, which I think is important. So as we, as we discussed with them after the initial meeting, I felt more confident that they are a good development group for, for this project. And, and when we get to that point, I mean, I, I would advocate for us to move forward in whatever fashion we decide to take this to the next step. Because I really do think they understand what we're looking for. And this is such an important project. Where it's located, that we need somebody who's going to be flexible and who appreciates what we're trying to do with that site. And I, I think that they've demonstrated, at least up to this point, that they, they get it. And I, and I think that's important because anybody can build a building. To get the concept and to achieve what we're looking for in the RFP, I think, takes a group that is willing to take public engagement, which they offered right, right from the get-go, that there'll be public input as they, as they go on this process. So I, having said that, I'll stop, but I, I think the board will discuss this as a board in a couple of minutes, but I just wanted to tell you my impression from the work that we all did in this process. I don't know if any other members of, of my, my committee would like to add anything, but that's my take on it.
Any members from the reuse committee with any comments at all?
John, Mr. Chair, I would, if you have one sec.
Yeah, please.
I would respond to Mrs. Cassavan and combine with, 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 with Mo said about the back part of Wesleyan. That was a specific issue that came up. And in the subsequent designs, they built out the buffer almost two or three X than what the buffer you saw in one of the first designs. So they almost moved the park to the back of the property to add a full of buffer, showing their flexibility. I would also echo Mr. DePaulo sentiments that when we, whenever we pitched them a curve ball or a question or asked them about retail, they were fairly accommodating. At that point, it's, um, you know, it's up to the board to move forward. But I would echo the sentiment that they were an incredibly flexible partner through RFP process. My two cents.
Thank you. Mrs. Lynch. Did I see your?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. I just want to say briefly that I've enjoyed being part of this process and have been really impressed by the Civico Greenlee Group. And also would just say that I, I know we all understand this, but to activate our town center, we, this is the, probably the most important component of what we've all been talking about for so long. And so to, to get it to a point where it's going to be the, the linchpin, for lack of a better word, in the activation of the town center is just so important. And I am excited and hopeful that the board will decide to move forward into the process further. But I did want to just state my excitement over the process and the involvement that has been really, really interesting and thought provoking for sure. So thank you for everyone's time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Mary Beth, one thing that you just said and as well as Paul, you know, the, and as well as previous comments about flexibility and being collaborative and whether it's the linchpin or it's really about getting this right, because this is the important project. This will set the tone for the center for generations to come. And I see it in the, the presentation. I hear the enthusiasm from the committee and that's important because when, back in 2017, 2018, I didn't think any of you would think they would still be on board in 2021. But a lot of that's because of the professionalism and the skills that you bring to the table and that's important. So you, your, your thoughts are very important as part of this process. And speaking of process, if I may ask Mrs. Loss, what are the options here in terms of process? I guess thinking out loud, but I'll defer to you. We could go forward tonight. We could take a little time to digest what we have tonight and then come back quickly with a decision to go forward. Or what are our options? If you could give some thoughts on that.
Absolutely. Thank you. For the record, this is Kristen Last, the Assistant Town Manager. And it's been a pleasure to work with the Beal Reuse Committee on this project and understand and learn a little bit more about the Civico Greenlee team. Would also just like to thank Mass Development for the grant that they awarded the town of Shrewsbury to go through this RFP process and recognize Catherine Madden and John Tremontosi on the line. They are available. Claire O'Neil for Mass Development, Catherine and, and John are available. If any board members have any questions related to the process or moving forward as well. I just wanted to point that out before I went forward with the process. So I really see several paths forward for the Board of Selectmen. On the first path is you don't feel comfortable with this team. You don't want to move forward and we would make that decision. The second path I see is that you feel comfortable with this team, but you'd like some more information. And that could happen in two paths. One, you could ask them for a, another more targeted presentation at a future board meeting. Or the other option I see is you could ask them for a future presentation, more targeted meeting, and turn that into a public hearing where you would invite members of the public to provide their feedback and input at that time. And then after that decision is made, you could determine if the board does want to enter into an agreement with the Civico Greenlee team, that we would work together on such an land disposition developer agreement that would set the parameters of the sale, which would set the sale price, some of the things such as a maximum unit number, a minimum commercial number, a minimum open space component, minimum affordability and those types of things. And the Beal Reuse Committee did outline those items for you in their March 24th, 2021 memo of, of some potential options that we worked with our consultant on. So those are really the paths that I see forward and happy to work with the Board of Selectmen in whichever one they choose and investigate other options that I might not have thought of.
Thank you, Mrs. Loss. Any, so we have three paths, do not move forward, we are comfortable, but would want to, well, we could completely move forward, but really it's ask for another targeted presentation or a future presentation slash public hearing. We have received a lot of feedback in the past and wanting people to continue that collaborative process with the community. That may be viable as well, but what is the pleasure of the board? Mr. DePaulo?
Mr. Chairman, obviously because of my experience on the, on the reuse committee, I might be in a little bit different place than everybody else. But I am comfortable with moving forward and starting to talk about how this is going to come together. I don't, I don't think that we're going to be able to get more information without talking with Civico and Greenlee about what our thoughts are and what their thoughts are and have the ability to look at some of those conceptual plans that may or may not incorporate some things that, that we like. So if, if other members of the board are comfortable with what they heard tonight, I think we could move forward and start, perhaps have a couple of members of the board with, with staff and consultants, if they're available, to talk to these folks. to talk to these folks and see if we can develop a solution or a project that we, we think will work. So that, that's where I am. And, you know, I, I obviously would defer to the rest of the board. But I think if we're comfortable with this team, that we should move forward, get something, get to the point where we have something a little bit more along the lines of, of what we're thinking and what we talked about subsequently to that initial presentation. And then that's when I would think about a public hearing because I think we have to have something a little more defined that the public can, can react to. So anyways, I went on, but that's where, that's where I think we are. I, I don't know how the rest, the other members of the board feel.
Thank you. Mrs. Cassavan?
So I would agree with what you just said, Mr. DePaulo. I mean, I know that there were opportunities for public participation when we were doing the town center visioning work. I know that the BL reuse committee is made up of a number of residents that live or work in the town center. And so I think that that represents some input from the, the community. But I also believe that we do need to have that opportunity for some public input as we move forward, but it's premature right now. I think we really do need to, I would be in favor of moving forward in the process with Civicco Greenlee and really fleshing out this plan a bit more so that we do have something a little bit more detailed to present to the public. I know just from what I'm seeing right now, it just looks like possibilities are, are endless and what we could do to, to really rework the town center. And I think that a lot of the community is going to feel the same enthusiasm for this project. But again, being mindful of those around the area itself that might want an opportunity to be participating a bit more in what they are going to be having in their, in their backyards. I would like to see a public hearing at some point in the future, but not right now.
Anyone else? So I, I agree. I think I'm comfortable moving forward. I think that as part of the collaborative process that's been discussed routinely this evening as part of all the materials that have been submitted, I think that when we have something a little more definite to bring in front of, for really public opinion is the way to go. The last thing we want to do is bring something that's fluid with, could be material changes after the fact. It just open, it's just not the way to do business. And again, going back to the importance of this project that we all recognize and the hard work that's been done to date, let's continue to go down the path of doing it right. So I'm comfortable as well going forward. But let's continue the collaboration and then get it to the point for a public hearing. So that is, I think that's where the board is at. Given that tonight's a meeting and we didn't post any action, I think it's more just the direction at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Mr. DePaulo.
I was just going to say, I, I think if, if we're in agreement, we should work with Mr. Mizikar and Ms. Last and the appropriate staff ourselves to understand how we move forward in this process. Not just negotiating, but, but the legal things that we need to do to move forward and what the sequence of events will be and, and what kind of commitments a developer would need to really get into more definitive plan. So I think it's a good idea if, if we wait and get all that information and come back and finalize everything at the next meeting.
Sure. That's fine. Does that work with colleagues? Does that work? Okay. I've seen nodding of heads and no nodding the other way. So I think that's the path forward. Great. Okay. Well, that's what we'll do. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for sticking with us so late. It's well done and we look forward to learning more information and continuing with this important process. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item, next item, next item on the agenda is under new business. It's review and act on a letter to the Mass Department of Transportation regarding Route 20 master plan recommendations. Mr. Mizikar, do you want to have any comments on this?
Sure. Mr. Chair, we discussed this concept at your last meeting and we have since received a lot of comments which are included as correspondence and the direction that the board was interested in moving in. Your prior meeting was to move forward with the recommendations of restricting left-hand turns from South Street onto Route 20 and encouraging MASTOT to move as promptly as possible with other improvements for safety within the corridor. And of course, the board has since then also, or in coordination with your last meeting requested, and we have submitted an application to the federal government through Congressman McGovern's office for funding for a lot of these projects that we still are waiting to hear more about. But I think the restriction to South Street is an important first step and public feedback largely supports that concept.
Any questions or comments? We'll get to in, in correspondence, the hundreds of pages of letters that we've received on this topic when we solicited comments on this subject in mid-April. Any questions or comments or, okay. Regarding the, the letter to DOT, DOT?
Will we send the letter?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right. Mr., having been moved in second in a roll call vote, Mr. LeBeau?
Hi.
Mr. DePaulo?
Hi.
Mrs. Cassavan?
Hi.
Mrs. Flynn?
Hi.
Mr. Samia, I motion carries unanimously. Next item under new business is review and act on the intermunicipal agreement with the City of Worcester for a shared public safety radio system. Mr. Mizikar?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, this evening, also patiently waiting with us is firefighter Joe Milos, who leads the town's lead technical support on public safety radio systems and deputy fire chief Seth Colby, who is, in addition to being the deputy fire chief, of course, our emergency management director. So I will turn it over to, to them as they'll make a presentation for the board's consideration of entering into intermunicipal agreement with the City of Worcester to share public space, public safety radio system components as we move forward with our project for the town of Shrewsbury.
Great. Thank you and welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. So just a real quick overview of what we're looking to do. We sent a summary letter out last week through Ms. Last about what we were doing. The new project for the radios that we are doing in town. We did some studies on it. The best way to go forward was to take and add on to the City of Worcester's system. So it's using what's already built into the city, which is new. It was only built five years ago at this point. So it's all very new infrastructure in the city. And take that and add on two additional sites in the town of Shrewsbury. In order to do that, there needs to be an intermunicipal agreement written up between the City of Worcester and the town of Shrewsbury. That agreement has gone through several different drafts over the past couple of months. The most final draft is what's up for consideration tonight. The draft shows that basically what we're looking to do is join with the city to use their frequencies. Part of the challenge of the radio world, unfortunately, right now is frequencies are very regulated by the FCC and trying to get new frequencies with everything going on between cell phones and all of the 5G rollout they're trying to do is not an easy thing at this point in time to, to pull off. So what we have done is with pairing with the City of Worcester, they already have 12 frequencies that are licensed to them by the FCC. This agreement allows those frequencies to actually be brought out and shared with the town of Shrewsbury, between the city and the town. The agreement shows that there is no cost to either side for doing this. We are building two additional sites. There is cost involved in that. But once the sites are up and running, there is no fee for either side to use anything that goes on. So we take and build two new sites in town here and gain the use of the three sites that already exist in the city to bring it up to a total of five for the price of two, basically. And a lot of the controls and so forth of the computer side of things that run the radio system are actually already in place in the City of Worcester and they are willing to obviously let us use those. And both sides of the agreement gain better coverage for each of their respective geographical areas with the way the system is set up. So though I said, the letter has been written. It has been reviewed by town council. It has been reviewed by Ms. Last, myself, and the deputy chief have all taken, looked at it. And on the city side of things, it's been reviewed by, their radio system is run by the emergency management department in the city. Their interim emergency manager right this moment, Kate Canole, actually took and looked through it and she was one of the ones that was instrumental writing it with us along with their city solicitor, Karen Myers, actually was the other one that wrote it up. So that is the agreement that's in front of you tonight to, for your consideration and vote.
Thank you very much. Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. DePaulo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, I'm a little confused. Who, I, I don't understand who's going to own the equipment. It's, are we going to use Worcester's equipment, firefighter Milos?
So, sorry, Mr. Paul, if I didn't explain that, that well. The equipment that the town is purchasing with the debt exclusion that we had approved to last town meeting stays the property of the town of Shrewsbury. That equipment stays in-house. There's a site at Masonic Hill in town here that we'll be building and there's one down at the Centec Fire Station off of Route 20. The city already has three sites that are built. They continue to own the equipment that is in those sites. But just like any computer network that you, you build nowadays, basically they're allowing themselves to talk to each other. And at that point, you're using the, the transmitting sites between all of them together. Without going into a pretty long explanation of exactly how it all works, everybody keeps, everything that they buy, everybody keeps. So all we're actually doing is, the biggest part of the IMA is the allowance of the FCC to bring those frequencies into Shrewsbury to use here. And then at that point, all maintenance repair costs that need to be done in the city are paid for by the city. All maintenance repair costs that need to be done in the town of Shrewsbury are paid for by the town of Shrewsbury per that agreement. So there's, like I said, it's, everybody retains ownership and everybody keeps their equipment up and running at their, at their own cost.
Okay. Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Just go ahead.
So are we putting any town-owned equipment on the Worcester sites? Or are we just sharing the frequencies between the city's sites and our sites?
The only, sorry, Mr. Paul, the only piece of equipment that's going on the city's sites is two three-foot microwave dishes because the sites need communication between them. All the rest of the equipment is staying in town in our own locations.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Cassavan?
Hi, and, and thank you firefighter Milos for being here. So I remember from working on the debt exclusion for the public safety radio communication system, that we wanted to have a number of frequencies so that there was never two parties talking on the same frequency. So does Worcester just have extra, is it like channels or extra frequencies that they don't need them and so we can use them and we're not going to be competing with Worcester first responders?
Okay, so a, a quick explanation of how it, how it functions. The, the system that we're going to is what they call a trunked radio system, which basically means there's a, a main computer that has a pool of channels that it looks through all of the time. Each person that keys a radio to start to try to conversation or try to talk, that computer will look, whichever frequency is not in use, it assigns to that conversation that's going on at that time, which is the same way your cell phone works now without, without ever knowing it. That 12 channels that the city has, they originally had six. When they redid their system five years ago, they upped it to 12 in preparation for expanding the system out to bring in other users. So this was, the state is trying very difficultly to make everything interoperable between all these different municipalities and towns. So as each system is being done, like the one in the city was, they, they try to leave some extra space in there for someone in the future. Also, with the way we went about this, we made sure also that the town has applied for and we have now actually received the licenses for four of our own frequencies as a backup. If something was to ever go wrong with the city and we needed to pull back on our own, we actually have enough frequencies for the system to be able to function still fully on its own here in town in Shrewsbury, if we needed to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have a couple firefighter Milos, again, thanks for sticking around late. Two quick questions. So the term of the agreement starts July 1st. What will happen the first, say, two, two and a half agreements? Is it two and a half years before the new system is operational? Is there some minimal amount of setup for the next couple of years? Or what happens, say, for the next two years?
Okay, so for Mr. Chair, the, for the beginning of what's going on right now is a project timeline. I apologize, I don't have the slide with me for that part of it. At this point in time, Motorola is finalizing their proposal for us for all of the equipment and subscriber radios here in town. It is due to us by the end of this week, if everything stays on schedule like it's supposed to. Once that IMA is signed, which we're, we're looking to have done tonight, it needs to go back to the city for city council to also officially vote on it and approve it. The city manager has been made aware of it. He has already read it and he is, is, is on board and okay with it. For the beginning of it, once July 1st starts, we could actually, at that point, we've, are allowed use of the system that already exists right now in the city. So in other words, any of the stuff that we need to use, the new BL school is actually, the BDA that's in that school, which is the amplification system that allows communications in that school, is already actually being built to work with the city system. So as soon as we do get this signed, they're, they're actually allowing us to, to make it retroactive to, as soon as the signatures are on it, they were okay with us actually starting to use the system to what we needed to use it for, for what's built already. The stuff here in town will be built over the project timeline. Actually, I, I got an email while I was sitting in the meeting tonight. They're asking for a little information from us. They're trying to start building our two sites here in town by late fall, early winter of this year. So that should hopefully get our two sites up and running. And then the police station itself will be finished when the police station is, it's to the point where it can accept the equipment inside the building.
Thank you. And then just the backend, so this, so that's very helpful. The, on the backend, if there's a termination for convenience clause. So let's say Worcester, for whatever reason, in the unlikely situation, they elect to terminate in some future period. What would that mean for us in terms of, what's the downside of that? And, and do we, would we have a backup plan?
So the, the downside to it for us would be we would lose a little bit of coverage on the west side of town. The, the two sites that we're going to build would cover the town at about a 85 to 90% rate, according to the maps that we were giving from Motorola through the engineering. The third site in the city right now that does the most advantage for us is at Green Hill Park. So that's overseeing a good part of the town. And that gives us a, a good amount of coverage in certain areas. We have the licenses already at this point in time through the FCC. So if the city was to terminate at any point, we have enough frequencies to make the system function on our own, with our own frequencies. At that point in time, there would be some small amount of equipment that would need to be bought at the site at Masonic to control the other site down at, excuse me, down at Centec. The exact number of cost on that, I do not have in front of me right this moment. I know that's a very minimal amount of equipment that would be required to, to make that up and running. If there were a point that the city were to do that. If there were a point that the city were to do that. At some point in time, we would have to reevaluate it and possibly put up, uh, one more tower site down at the, uh, the west side of town. Which would be somewhere in the Parker Road School area would be the best spot for it. Uh, we could then at that point take. We would be on a six, we would be able to move the sites down to six channels instead of 12. Which would allow us to take the equipment from the two sites that were now 12 and basically rearrange it and put it in a different spot. So no, it wouldn't, uh, would not bring the system down to not functional. It would just change it around for a little bit until we were able to officially put that third site back up at that point in time.
Thank you very much. Mr. DiPaolo, you have another question?
Thank you firefighter Miles. Um, I'm, I'm really impressed with, um, how conversant you are in this. I know it's very, very technical and you've been working on it for a long time, but, um, thank you for all that effort. Um. I, I just have a question. There's no tower going up. Or is anything going at the new police station?
So at this point in time, the new police station will, uh, obtain the dispatch console. So it's a. It's a terminal. Basically it's computer based, uh, you know, everything in the world now is computer based. But they are receiving five dispatch locations in the, in the, in the building. They will also have six mutual aid radios to be able to talk to. They talk to Boylston North Pro. The towns that they deal with on a regular basis on the inside of that. But as for the actual equipment that runs the system itself, there will be no, no equipment in either the fire station or in the new police station. It's all at the actual radio sites. Uh, I do apologize in the Centec Fire Station will be one of the radio sites. So technically there is equipment in, in the fire stations. But there is no, uh, it doesn't require the police station or the fire station to function. They, it functions on its own, just like a, a cell phone tower does for AT&T or Verizon.
Okay, so the, I, I was under the impression, you know, based on discussions of the building committee that. There was going to be a, a tower, um, but sounds like there's not.
I, I apologize, Mr. Paul. There, there is a tower at the police station. That station, that tower there is for those mutual aid radios for the other towns, uh, because that's. Separate antennas, separate, uh, cabling and stuff that runs those. That's not connected through what the, the new stuff is here. The, the, the stuff that we're talking about now is the stuff to run the town of Shoesbury itself, not, uh, talk to someone else.
So if I could follow up, Mr. Chairman, so, um. Is, is the, is what you just talked about the mutual aid equipment and antennas is, I, you know, and I. I, I probably should know, but we haven't gotten down to that level of detail in the, in the budget yet. Is that part of the, of the police station budget? Or is that part of this public safety communication system budget? Not, not the consoles. I mean, the, the, the intended work than mutual aid or whatever equipment we need.
Correct. So, uh, as per the last meeting we had with the building committee when, uh, which was last week. I'm sorry, the week before. Uh, the scope of work for the radio project is covering. All of the radios that go in the building there, all of the antennas that go on that tower, all of the wiring in between all of that equipment. Uh, what it is not covering is the actual tower and foundation work on site. That is being covered under the police budget itself. Other than that. The police budget has no cost for the radios themselves that are going into the, into the building at all. That's all being covered under the scope from Motorola as for the actual, uh, infrastructure in town. That actual structure and the actual foundation itself are into the, the police side of the project. Because that's, when we went back and forth, that was the easiest way to do it. Uh, for the pricing side of things, we're getting all of the costs from Motorola through the state contract in Massachusetts. That state contract does not allow for construction over a certain amount of dollars, which is a $50,000 limit. So in order to keep everything as organized as possible, that the actual structure and the foundation stayed and the police side. And then everything else has been brought into the actual radio project itself.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement with the city of Worcester.
Some of.
Second.
Thanks. Heaven moved in second and a roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau. Mr. DiPaolo.
Hi.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Hi.
Mrs. Flynn.
Hi.
Mr. Samia, I thank you for your presentation. It's been approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks for staying late.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is to review and act on recommendations of warrant articles that were held during our last meeting. We held up these articles, articles three, four, five. Seventeen, eighteen, thirty-four and thirty-six contingent upon the override vote. So if I may, um, you can take them in tandem like we did last time. Uh, articles three, four and five. Related to the stabilization fund, article three is setting the stabilization fund. Four is a, a basically appropriating the 3.1 million into the stabilization fund. And article five. Uh, is also related to that, that, excuse me, that is the contingent article on the budget, which has the, uh. Again, dependent upon the outcome of the override. Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to?
Chairman, so we're looking. I mean, even five is something now that we would be on, correct?
I'm sorry, Ms. Silva.
Well, I'm just, I, I, I don't have my water in front of me.
Oh, yes.
So I just didn't totally follow. You talked about articles.
Sure, article, article three is the establishment of the stabilization fund. Article four would be transfer amounts to the stabilization fund, the 3.1 million as part of the first year funding of the stabilization fund. And article five, the contingent article relates to the budget. Um, and in each case, it would be Plan A, right, Mr. Mizikar for each of those three articles?
That's right. Yes. And for article five specifically, it's the difference between the 131. Million and the 137 million dollar budget proposals.
Mr. Chairman, for any particular language or are we just looking for a motion to recommend?
Sorry, yes.
The board recommends?
Yes.
Articles three, four and five.
Yes, yes, please. Intertain a motion to recommend.
Then that is, then that is my motion, my motion. That is.
Heaven moved in second and a roll call vote, Mr. LeBeau.
Hi.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Hi.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Hi.
Mrs. Flynn.
Hi.
And Mr. Samia, hi. So motion to recommend passes unanimously. Articles seventeen. Article eighteen, article seventeen is the capital budget. And article eighteen, uh, was moving $750,000 from ca, free cash to the general stabilization account. Is there, what's the pleasure of the, the board? Is there a motion to recommend on these?
Move, we recommend, uh, article seventeen and eighteen.
Second.
Having moved in second and a roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau.
Hi.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Hi.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Hi.
Mrs. Flynn.
Hi.
Mr. Samia, I motion recommended, recommend article seventeen and eighteen passes unanimously. Article thirty-four. So articles thirty-four and thirty-six were presented to us at our last meeting, as you recall. We desired an opportunity to think through them a little more. We'll start with article thirty-four. It relates to the town adopting a following resolution. There's a preamble. Um, and then the motion itself moves that the town of Shoesbury recognizes, um, that we are in a climate and ecological emergency. And there's additional language after that. Any comments, thoughts, Mr. DiPaolo, your heads up?
Um, I, I was gonna put my hand up. I didn't realize I still had it up, but, um, I, I would prefer to hear what town meeting has to say on this. Um, I've still kind of in a middle.
Anyone else? Mrs. Cass.
Mr. Samia.
Yes.
So, um, I'm okay with waiting to see what town meeting has to say on this. Um, I just know that Governor Baker in March signed an act creating a next generation roadmap for Massachusetts climate policy. Which basically says that we're going to achieve net zero emissions by 2050 and in the interim. Set goals for emission reductions and increased productions for environmental justice communities and energy efficient building codes. Um, and also I just heard today that Vineyard Winds has been approved. And so there's another project, um. Looking to bring clean energy to the state. So I think that the governor is well aware of the climate emergency. And is taking the steps that are required along with the legislature to make it a priority in Massachusetts. So I am supportive of this article, but I'm just not sure. What it actually will achieve in light of what's already taking place at the state level, um, in order to bring this to, uh, uh. Or to have a climate map roadmap for us to follow, um, you know, as a state. So I don't see any harm in the article, but I also don't see that it's. Moving us forward in any way that's going to be meaningful at this point. So I'm fine to wait for a town meeting as well, but that's sort of where I sit with this.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. LeBeau.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I tend to agree with what, uh, fellow board members have said, um. You know, as, as individuals, and I don't want to certainly speak for, for you, um. But I think we're all well aware of, uh, issues relative to climate change, greenhouse gas, et, et, et cetera. Um, I admit I am reluctant to, um. To support, um, actions like this that I'm, I'm just not sure of the, of the relevance. Uh, that might be a poor choice of words, but, uh, I mean, I think the town has demonstrated that it, it, it is sensitive to these areas. Adopting green communities, some of the other practices that we've, uh, managed in the past. Um, or, or implemented in the past, I think clearly, uh, are a testament to that. Um, but as the selectman Cassavan said, uh, you know, as, as my boss has just taken such a profound position on it. I'm certainly, and, and it, and it does, it's resonating down through all the state agencies and departments. Um, to, uh, uh. To recognize and to, uh, adjust, uh, to follow that guidance. Um. I mean, I'm not going to vote no, but I, I do question exactly what we're accomplishing here. And. I admit that this does not mean that I am on a path to, um. Vote to recommend similar, or I shouldn't say similar, but other efforts, um, that may be very socially minded. But don't have a clear connection to town's policy or action. I mean, that's, that's really my concern here. Um, I just, I just don't know if that's a path I, I, I want us to get on. A lot of towns in the seventies became nuclear free zones. I'm not sure truthfully what the value of that was. Um, but a lot of debate at town meetings across the state, uh, were held about that. Um, so, uh. You know, I, I, I. I think I'm going to vote to recommend, um, but I do have, because I, I mean, we, we can easily vote, vote yes or no. Um, and I'm leaning in that direction, but it does give me some pause, uh, for those other reasons.
Anything else? Um, so I share your sentiment. I think that we're all mindful of the issues that we're facing in the Commonwealth that you mentioned, Mr. LeBeau. Our governor has taken, um, a significant, significant lead in this area. Um, the one thing I think would, I would like to see and, and maybe more meaningful as we develop a strategic, strategic plan. How the concept of sustainability and how all of this fits in where, where we're going as a community. And then there's more of a direct impact as to what we're doing. I think sending a letter is fine. But, um, you know, what happens after that is where my head was at. We can send the letter, but okay, what happens next? So I'm all for, uh, I'm where you are. I don't have an issue voting to recommend. And we can wait to town meeting to hear what people say. But I think the more impactful thing is what does it mean going forward with any strategic plan that we have? Mrs. Mrs. Flynn, did you raise your hand? You have.
I did, but it really was just to say I am in agreement with, uh, what all the, the fellow board members have said. And I do feel it is more symbolic, um, than requiring specific action. And it doesn't seem like any of us are against it per se, but I too question, uh, what, what the purpose was of it. I do agree that, um, it's ultimately up to town meeting and look forward to hearing what their thoughts are.
Thank you. So is the consensus. Thank you for your comments. Is the consensus we wait to town meeting and take the vote then? Is that what I'm saying? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the last article that we have is article thirty-six. That was brought by Mr. Moss. We had a presentation through us. It relates to, um, to adopting a resolution opposing the addition of fluoride. To the town of Shoesbury's drinking water supply. And then he has recitals there in the resolution itself. The town goes on record as opposing the addition of fluoride to the drinking water supply and then talks about, um. Potential exposure to vulnerable subpopulation. So we did as well, like we did with article thirty-four. Wanted some time to think about it and wanted to see now where members of the board are with article thirty-six. Mrs. Cassavan.
Uh, so Mr. Samia, as usual, I am in favor of removing the fluoride from the drinking water and not adding it. It's been a longstanding stance of mine that I just believe that. There are opportunities for people to obtain fluoride in other ways and that fluoridating the water and making everyone, um, opt in. Is not the direction that I think we should be going in.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. DiPaolo.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I will hold my longstanding opposition to this article, um. Uh, the difference of opinions on, on, at least within our town of what the science is. Um, but what I have seen and what I have read even recently. And, um, got information from the head of water at NIH. Um, or EPA, um, I'm sorry, I can't remember which one it was. Um, my, my position hasn't changed. Um, and I would just say that a lot of what, um, the basis of this. This new petition is, um, is based on information coming out of a trial. About the subject, um, that has not been completed and that no one has seen. Um, and the proponent has not seen the entire transcript. Um, so. Um, the other Canadian studies out there, but, um. If the science was clear, I would say yes. Um, everything that I've read, um, I think it's still safe. And I think there's a benefit to it. So, um, obviously, um, I would vote not to recommend this article.
Any other comments? Mrs. Flynn.
I, I haven't seen anything, um, in the petition or the, uh, the presentations that validate that it is unsafe. To have fluoride in our water. I think the biggest gap for me is the demand from the community. You know, personal feelings aside, it does not seem like there's an overwhelming, uh, demand to remove the fluoride from our water. And, um, I would expect to maybe have a little bit more community input on what their preferences are regarding this.
Any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I simply, uh. Have not been convinced, um. that it's time to make a change. We've heard one individual advocate very zealously upon its, for its removal. However, and there is a lot of other science out there as well from many medical associations, et cetera. I don't believe our Board of Health has taken a position opposing the introduction of fluoride into the municipal water supply, so I am not in favor of recommending this article.
Thank you. So I've thought a lot about this article. I had the opportunity pre-COVID to meet with people about their concerns about fluoride. You know, I think there's sort of two tracks to this. The first is whether there, it's a neurotoxin, and you look at the Canadian study and the results that are there, and then you look at the CDC and World Health Organization and NIH study in 2017. And the information, even when they point to that study, says, yeah, it's a study, but, and then you read into the acknowledgement of, of results, but then interpretation of what they mean. I haven't seen anything convincing that the Canadian study is more than an interpret, that it's, say, a setting or indicative of a trend. It is a test. I know there was one in Mexico as well. I guess part of it's anecdotal evidence that if you look at this communities in Massachusetts, it was a hundred and forty, it's probably give or take some now, that maybe I'm oversimplifying, but where the bell curve would be, and you'd have communities that fluoridate their water, that I think did be a difference between those communities that have had longstanding introduction of fluoride into the water. So the medical piece, you know, the, the final thing was that went to healthcare professionals around here, a longstanding dentist, a longstanding dentist who was one of the best in the business, and I got his thoughts, and, and he explained the difference even of having patients from, say, Worcester or Shrewsbury and the positive impact that it had not only on their oral health, but also their physical health. So the science piece, not saying that there are studies that are out there that don't say otherwise, but that I don't think, and I tend to agree that the science there, I haven't been convinced otherwise yet, given all these organizations. I think the second prong of the argument is what I thought long and hard about. Is it something we want in our water? That's a different question. You know, right now where I am, I'm still in favor of fluoride in water, but this was a close one for me, but it was not the first prong, it was the second prong. I do think that there are opportunities for people to have good dental hygiene that there weren't, say, in nineteen forty-five when in Michigan it was introduced. But I'm not there yet. So I would, at this point, also be in the camp of not recommending. But I appreciate the, 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 the article brought before us. I just haven't seen the science, but the, the second prong I thought long and hard about, is it something that I want in our water, or we want in our water? And it was a lot closer for me, but at this point, I still would keep it in. So I think we've heard any other comments, but I think we know where we stand at this point. I'd entertain a motion on article forty-six.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board not recommend article thirty-six.
Second.
I mean, we've been moved in seconded, a roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
No.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I vote not to, motion not to recommend passes four to one. So thank you. Thanks for your feedback on that. Now we go to old business. Article fourteen, it's review and act on the request by Sanam Zaire of H. Jamie Lane and others to designate June fifth, twenty twenty-one as Minority and Women-Owned Business Day pursuant to our recently adopted policy thirty. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Samia.
Yes, Mrs. Cassavan.
I just wanted to point out, just for the public and anyone who might be following this, is that we just made a couple of changes. I was working with Mr. DiPaolo on this just to remove the last sentence, which required the board to issue this proclamation yearly. I just, I don't believe that's something that we should be responsible for remembering. And, and if the residents would like it yearly, they're welcome to go ahead and submit for another proclamation. And that would be one change, and then just another change. There was a, a phrase about dedicating ourselves and just as a board unsure what that really meant. So we worked a little bit of that language just to make it more accessible to what we're willing to be proclaiming as a board.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have one comment, but on the res- the, the resolution itself, I understand this is for twenty twenty-one only. Would it be clearer if in the resolution itself, to make it clear that it's designate the first Saturday in June twenty twenty-one? Otherwise, it could be read as the first Saturday in June. That now the header itself says June fifth, twenty twenty-one, that's clear. I just, or we make the resolution clear that it's for twenty twenty-one only.
I think that's fine if you wanted to put that in there, Mr. Chairman.
Otherwise, it's fine with me, but how's the board?
I, I agree.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move the board, excuse me, I, I move the board designate June fifth, twenty twenty-one as Minority and Women-owned Business Day pursuant to policy thirty and implement, execute a proclamation capturing the changes that Selectman Cassavan and Chairman Samia have just made.
Second.
I think we've been moved in second in a roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Second item on our old business is to review and act on the request from Bridget Hilton, One Jacobson Drive, and Elizabeth Hilton of One Twenty-three. Bumblebee Circle on the issuance of a proclamation to designate June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one as Juneteenth Independence Day pursuant to policy thirty. Any comments?
Mr. Samia.
Yes, please.
Just one more time on this. The reason it came back before us was the removal of the last sentence where we would be issuing this yearly, because again, if the resident would like it yearly, they would just need to resubmit. That way we don't forget it on our watch, and you know, it's handled properly.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just, just to add to that, the Personnel Board has, following what the state is doing, as is proposing designating this as a, as a holiday. So the town is certainly acknowledging the date as set by the state. So I, I think this is, this is a good way to go. We'll do it this year. If they, if they want another proclamation next year, they certainly can ask for one, but I, I think the town is already working to recognize this by actually having it be a town holiday in line with the state.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board designate June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one as Juneteenth Independence Day. Issue a proclamation declaring that and incorporating the change that Selectman Cassavan just mentioned removing certain sentence.
Second.
We've been moved in second in a roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I motion carries unanimously. There's no other business. We'll go on to correspondence. Number sixteen, letter dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-one from Angela Snell, Superintendent of Public Facilities and Parks. Reason, Ray Dean Park, Shrewsbury Little League Field Renovation. It was a letter to thank the Shrewsbury Little League for the field renovation on the Field One Ball Field, the and also for the annual ball field cleanup that the Shrewsbury Little League undertakes. Number seventeen, it's an email dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. And together with the second email, subsequent email under items twenty-seven, emails from Joseph Mondello, Thirty-four Independent Lane regarding the Shrewsbury tax override. I email, email dated April twenty, so noted, April, email dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one from Sanam Zaire, H. Jamie Lane regarding term limits, which is a citizen's petition under article thirty-five, so noted. Next item nineteen, it's an email dated April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one from Kevin Kresnecki, Principal Transportation Planner, CMR PC, One Mercantile Street, regarding the twenty-two, twenty twenty-six transportation program meeting that was held on May fifth. Next item is an email, so noted, email dated April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one from Peter Riley, Nineteenth Pheasant Hill Drive to the Shrewsbury Boat Zoning Board of Appeals. Reason, the point at Hills Farm Estate, the financial analysis and eligibility for forty-B designation, so noted. Next item twenty-one, email dated April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one from Peter Riley, Nineteenth Pheasant Hill Drive, reason request asking appropriate town bodies to ask Mass Housing to reconsider its project eligibility determination in light of the, he perceives as significant changes, so noted. Items twenty-two to twenty-four are ZBA decisions, all dated as of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. So noted, item twenty-five, letter dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one from John Scibelli of Thirty-eight Nolton Ave regarding an ongoing concern regarding leaf pickup and some other observations that he had. Twenty, item twenty-six, letter dated twenty, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one from Ernie and Natalie Revard, Forty Gauge Lane to Town Manager Kevin Mizikar regarding the outdoor use of senior, the senior center. Since that's time, Mr. Mizikar has had email correspondence with them, I believe, item so noted. Item twenty-seven, email, May, I already talked about that, but it's email dated May second, twenty twenty-one from Joe Mondello, Thirty-four Independence Lane, reason the Shrewsbury tax override, so noted. Item twenty-eight, email dated May third, twenty twenty-one from Angela Snell, Superintendent of Public Facilities and Parks regarding the virtual Memorial Day ceremony, which will be held, which will be aired on the Shrewsbury Media Connection on May thirty-first at nine thirty a.m. So noted, next item twenty-nine, email dated May third, twenty twenty-one from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the fiscal year twenty-two budget update, talking about that of the state, that the House of Representatives passed it a hundred and sixty to zero. It's going to the Senate on May twenty-fourth. So noted, next item thirty, email dated May third, twenty twenty-one from Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, to Ernest Revard, Forty Gauge Lane. Reason outdoor activities at senior center, so noted. Item thirty-one, letter dated May sixth, twenty twenty-one from Nick Repetka, Highway Division Manager to Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, regarding streets, the street sweeping report May sixth, twenty twenty-one, and he cited that all areas north of Route Nine had been completed, had been completed, resulting in three hundred tons of material to the appropriate landfill. Item thirty-two, letter dated May seventh, twenty twenty-one from Andrea Mobilia, Esquire Twenty-two, Eddington Street, Middleton regarding CMRK Inc. donation bin application, so noted. Item twenty-three, email dated May seventh, twenty twenty-one from Don Musial, VP of Ash Monofills, Seventy, our Portium Drive, Suite Three Hundred, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, regarding the Shrewsbury landfill Phase Five and authorization to construct final permit. So noted, our, item thirty-four, email dated May seventh, twenty twenty-one from Natalie Fowler, Alliance Marketing Partners, Thirty-three Fifty Peachtree Road, Suite Twelve Ten, regarding a ribbon cutting at newly refurbished Dunkin' Donuts this Saturday at one eighteen Boston Turnpike, so noted. Item thirty-five, email dated May seventh, twenty twenty-one from Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, to Mike Hazen for Ribbon Circle regarding Tobin Hill, move a hood letter to Tobin Hill Bridge. And Mr. Mizikar set forth a plan regarding the, any intends to send to the board this fall to move forward with the reconstruct construction of the Tobin Hill Bridge and associated work for Nursery Drive. Items thirty-six three are correspondence regarding Route Twenty from the Carter Master Plan, resulting from our April thirteenth email soliciting feedback from the community regarding turns on Route Twenty off South Street in a westerly way, no left turn. I just want to thank everyone that took the time to fall into this, including a lot of the young fifth graders fell from Al Amra the academy, where there were many touching letters from there, as well as some children who had been previously injured on Route Twenty. So appreciate all of the time that everyone took to send us their thoughts regarding our feedback. So that is yet, well, actually, including, I think, a hundred, a hundred eighty-eight plans from Al Amra Academy are chimed on to a statement as well. So I just want to appreciate everyone taking the time to reach out to us. If there are no other matters this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, roll call vote is required, Mr. LeBeau. Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. Thank you and good night.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Thank you.